This conference will now be recorded.
It is a duty. Let's stand and say the pledge. A pledge, ladies and gentlemen, to the playing of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with other than justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. This is the Metro County Board Supervisors Meeting. We're at the courthouse in Osage. Meeting is available by GoToMeeting also, which is agenda in front of us. If there are any corrections needed, otherwise we can approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Our goes major motions, your second.
I'll second.
Brian seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve the minutes of the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting and the claims. When corrections needed, we can approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the December nineteenth meeting and claims.
Mayor's made a motion, is your second?
I'll second it.
Anderson is seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none?
From Kalten, Jim.
Aye.
Sidney, Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Motion carries. County Attorney General discussion.
Morning.
Good morning.
Either fortunately or unfortunately, however you look at it, there hasn't been much change since last week. So I don't really have anything specifically to talk about. Senator was happy to take questions, though, whatever anybody wants to discuss with me.
Anything for the attorney? I guess we're kind of quiet, too.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Sheriff update.
I'm kind of the same vote as scanner attorney.
Okay.
New from last week. I think the holidays, okay, so we all did too, but I don't have anything.
All right. Any questions from the board? Very good, thank you. Department had discussion. Is there any department here discussion?
Seeing none on mine.
Okay.
I had one guy called about if we hear anything about windows going northeast of Osage. I hear bumps and movements. People there have been signing up, I guess. Well, I haven't know.
I got that's where that one windmill farm was going.
Yeah.
That's yeah. But you're having one of West Town and one of East Town.
Yeah. Were they all south of number nine? No.
No, no. They were going up to the curb to go to Riceville. The map, all the way up to McIntyre.
Yeah. From the map.
Yeah.
My neighbor had, they're coming within, you know, right, but they're miles south of me. That's the line. So that covers all Little Cedar and east.
Yeah.
So we're closer.
Goes all the way to Highway nine.
So I'm blind, I can't, I'll south of McIntyre. So it goes from there over.
Yep.
Then New Haven area and then I think there's another farm south of Osage, too. On that, that's possible.
I'm not saying.
I think that one's all going to be one and the one west. One west and the east.
They always said it was going to be like a three tier thing.
Three tier?
Yeah. Like one was last, second one left the east, and then they were going to expand from New Haven all the way to Howard County. That's what I was always told from those guys, is what their plan was. I haven't heard anyone.
Yeah, I know a number, but Little Cedar area, I know a number of people have signed up. That area is going pretty well.
Do you ever get a pamphlet on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should have them coming in, giving updates.
I was waiting for the order.
They're waiting for that process, yeah.
I'm sure they're gonna. I mean, the people have signed up, gotten checks already.
That's it. Any other department discussion?
Okay. I have one question.
Yeah?
You can ride ATVs on state highways, like two eighteen, you can ride an ATV up to eighteen?
License driver, insurance, registered unit.
And you can. Okay. Somebody thought state roads were out, but as long as they're not poorly, correct?
Right.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just double checked, and I know I asked you one other time, and I thought that's it. Okay, thanks. I just saw it right. Somebody had asked me, and I said I'd ask. Okay, thank you.
County engineer update. Rich is not with us today. He had, he sent Rachel an email regards him. Rachel, that was the only document that he sent, correct?
Yep.
And then his email kind of alludes to this document. We don't sign this document today. He's got the semifinal voucher that's out. That's the process that takes place first is the semifinal voucher has to go to the contractor. So the contractor verifies the quantities of the project. Then it comes back to Rich. Then this process starts. So we really don't have anything to sign today.
Okay.
So that's, that'll be for another time.
And then is that Rich south of McIntyre, correct?
This is the.
Corrections, though. Oh, sorry.
I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure I can do it.
Okay. I think it's like, because that's the one they got approved for the grant funding, correct?
No, this is, this is closing out a project.
Oh, closing out a project?
Yeah.
So it's not that one?
So it's, I don't have the number of it, but I'm pretty sure this is probably the one on five, Rich.
Oh, it could be. Okay, okay.
So that's the most current one we've got going on. That would make sense that the contractor needs to approve the quantities, so.
Okay. Because I know that other one's in the works, so that's.
Yeah, no, that's, this is different. This is closing one out.
Okay. That's fine, let's accept it.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Presentation and water sample funding request from the Mitchell Soil and Water Conservation District. Good morning.
Morning. I have a handout for you guys.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Morning. Thank you. Yes. Be on. Morning.
Uh, so yeah, I'm Devin Storrs, representing the Mitchell Soil and Water District. And we are requesting our twenty twenty-four water sampling request of nine thousand dollars. We requested nine thousand last year. And then I just kind of have our numbers broken down here on this form here. The total cost is right around eighty-nine hundred dollars. And we're actually working this year with collaborating with Iowa Corn growers Association and Iowa Soybean Association to pick up some edge of field practices, like more saturated buffers, bioreactors. So that just transpired in the last couple of days. I have on here that we're monitoring four bioreactors right now, but that'll jump up to eight bioreactors and a couple saturated buffers for this coming year. And then that, those costs will be covered by corn growers and Iowa soybeans. So we were able to just stick with our baseline of nine thousand, same as last year, to cover these twenty-one stream sites. We're covering all the major watersheds within the county. The Little Cedar, the Cedar River, Little Cedar, Wopsey, Rock Creek. And so we're getting kind of all over the county. We're not saying any general area. A lot of these sites, we have seventeen years of data on, which is just kind of priceless in terms of bringing government dollar, government cost share dollars to our county for our producers. When we have that kind of data, we can really back up the practices that we're using here. And we can kind of show the progress that we're making, and therefore we can track that more. And then they see that the producers in our county are using these practices, and they're being successful with them. And therefore we get more opportunity to get more acres covered. More grass waterways, more cover crop acres, reducing tillage across the county. Those are kind of our three main practices that we see a lot of. And those are three practices that do a lot of good in reducing nitrates, soil delivery, and then catching all that leachate as well. So that's our request is nine thousand dollars for the fiscal year twenty-four. We sample starting in April and go through October. And so we cover basically the whole, whole spring into the end of the fall. And then by that time end, October, usually the streams are a little shallow and the bioreactors don't have a whole lot of water running through them anymore. So that's our timeline. In terms of different things transpiring right now, carbon, climate smart commodities and carbon sequestration is being pushed across the whole schematic of agriculture. And so cover crops reduce tillage. The next two or four years, we're seeing a huge influx of cost share dollars coming to Midwest. And so we're really hoping to kind of have a knockout year in the next couple of years with all these extra money coming in. We can get some practices and programs funded that we haven't been able to in the past. So a lot of those holders are still sitting on the shelves for five, six years, and we're hoping to reach out to those producers and get all those shelved and get them out on the ground and get them implemented. So. Anybody's got any questions for me? How we use that nine thousand or any, anything for me about the water sampling coming up?
You, you use it basically to justify what you're doing, and then you said you give them.
Yeah, the nine thousand dollars from the board supervisors is strictly used for lab analysis and shipping costs. The labor for doing all the sampling is through the Soil and Water District. I do the sampling for those. And so the nine thousand is strictly lab analysis and shipping costs. And then for the bioreactor, the extra bioreactor, we're picking up four new bioreactors and two new saturated buffers. And those are two practices that don't have a lot of sampling history across the state. They're just kind of recently being really pushed out and implemented kind of all over, doing these batch and build programs. And so we're hoping that we can start getting some good clean data on them to show and prove that they're working. And then we're working with the corn growers and soybean association for that, to cover those extra costs.
And the information goes to the state, does it also, so if they can.
Yep.
Support the programs or?
Yep. So we actually just got new software updated. So every acre of conservation I get to put down in Mitchell County gets put into this computer software. And so you can pull up a geospatial map of our county, and it highlights every acre that's impacted by conservation. And then we also have our watersheds outlined in that and our sampling points depicted in that. And so you can really see our nitrate levels in a watershed where we have a lot of highlighted acres where there's conservation going on versus a higher nitrate level in a watershed where there's not a lot of conservation going on. That's all new within the last six months that we're learning and picking up and getting all of our county info into it. And that should benefit us in the future, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
How does, like, say, just for example, the Cedar River, we test at the north end where it comes into the county versus the south end? Does it work, better, same?
Yeah, so it's, it's hard to tell on, on any given day. If we went up today and sampled on the, on the north end of the county and then sampled just east of Osage, it'd be drastically different. And then if we did it again tomorrow, it'd be drastically different. And so that's why we kind of stress the continuity of sampling, that seventeen year length of time of data. And you can depict trend lines, and that's really where you can dig into what's happening in your river after you have a big set of data. And then depicting trend lines is how you can really tell what's, what's going on.
That one, I know that the water gets cleaner as it comes out of the county versus coming in.
Yeah.
Cedar River, I know that's still the case, or?
Yeah, I mean, we definitely, Melissa found a lot of data on these trinkets. He probably had a lot more info to talk to you about it than me, but I know for sure that he's definitely been stressing with me that our trend lines are moving down. And we just need to keep, keep moving on that and keep the outreach and keep things growing. So don't want to, don't want to take a couple of years break and then come back and redo our trend lines, and we've got a spike, you know? So just keeping on it.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I know a lot of farmers split their nitrogen down, you know, puts them on up front. Yeah. Top dress, and that, I'm sure that helps with the nitrate level going down, too.
Yeah, absolutely. The technology, yeah, the technology is incredible. You know, with herbicide application, fertilizer application, you can really get into these things. And we're hoping that our co-ops in the, around neighboring counties can get into those and get that new technology implemented into their co-op. And then these producers can, can utilize that. And that would make a big difference, for sure. Help us out.
I think it's a good program.
Yeah.
Devin, at your, at the soil county, at the meeting, at your last meeting, you spoke something, I just jotted it down quickly, about the amount of tons of soil that's leaving.
Yeah.
Every year, and then how many years they anticipate soil life remaining. You talked about microbes.
Yeah.
Being able to live at a certain temperature. You want to touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah. I attended the big soil health event a couple of weeks back, week before Christmas. Mountain Cedar Falls, a really great event. I would recommend to any farmer in the Midwest. People come from Iowa, Illinois, Indiana, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Missouri. And what we touched on there was annually in the United States, it was nineteen point seven billion tons of topsoil across the United States. And there's modern studies that depict there's areas in the United States with fifty to sixty years left of soil life. I don't know if you guys have read the book, but it's a book by, oh man, I can't even think of his name. But it talks about the life of soil and how a country can wear out its soil every thousand years. And we're looking at a couple hundred years of farming in the United States, and we've got infertile soil in places. And that's strictly due to intense tillage and intense application of nutrients and herbicide. You're just, you're kind of stripping your soil, and you're not necessarily giving anything back to it. Where we kind of become a world where we depend on inputs a little bit to grow our crop. And that's not sustainable moving forward in the future. And so talking about cover crops, reducing tillage and growing our soil, where you can actually build soil. We've got, you know, I remember being in a class and people saying, you can't grow, you'll never see an increase in organic matter in your time of life. But we've got guys giving studies, and they're increasing organic matter by half a percent or a full percent over the course of four or five years on a two-hundred acre field. And so we can really alter the way that we plant and farm out there using these two simple things, cover crops and reduced tillage. You can really alter your farm field. And, and like Jerry Hatfield, a soil scientist with the USDA, he spoke, you can change your water cycling in your field within weeks. You can change your carbon in months, and you can change your nutrient cycling in years. And so that's what we're looking at, and that's kind of the timeline of getting into cover crops and reduced tillage. We spoke that if you asked a farmer in the Midwest what his growing season was, he'd probably tell you anywhere is from a hundred and fifty days a year to a hundred and eighty, two hundred and ninety days a year that they have to get out and get in their field and grow something and harvest it. Well, we have studies that show microbial activity in the soil will happen at minus twenty-one degrees Fahrenheit. And so if microbial activity is happening, you have the opportunity for photosynthesis. You have the opportunity for gaining stuff in your soil. But if there's nothing growing out there, then that microbial activity will be dead and nothing will be happening in your soil. So the I states, Illinois, Indiana, and Idaho, or Illinois, Indiana, we have three hundred growing days a year. If soil microbes are working at minus twenty-one degrees temperature, we have three hundred days a year where we could actively be growing something in our soil. So if we're wasting a hundred and twenty days a year of photosynthesis of getting free carbon and hydrogen and oxygen into our soil, then I think that we're missing a huge opportunity. You're wasting a hundred and twenty days of potential photosynthesis for your soil. And so that was a big key that I took away from that. And, you know, that was a really important conference, and I'm working on, I'm going to get some outreach stuff out there for the rest of the county. I did a publication in the DJ Journal a couple of weeks ago about it, about the Big Soil Health Event and Climate Smart Commodities, and touched on a few of these things. So definitely doing what we can to, to get the word out there that the support is there for anybody who's willing to, to try and adopt or to, to even have the conversation about it. You know, we, we welcome anything and everything, so.
The Big Soil Health Event, is that an annual thing, always in the same location, or is it lost around the state, or how does that work?
Yeah, I went last year for the first time, and it was in Cedar Falls for the first time last year. And then I was in Cedar Falls again this year, and it is an annual event. They do it all across the Midwest. I know they have different events in different states, but I believe the Iowa one will continue to stay in Cedar Falls. It's been so big. And, you know, you get to four or five conferences a year, and this is definitely the one where I would want to go back to every year, for sure. They got a lot of good speakers that come from all over the Midwest, and it's mostly producers who are ten, twelve years into their regenerative agriculture journey. And then they touch on issues they've had, problems they had, bricks levels in their soybeans, and, and a lot of detail for producers who are core starting this type of adoption. It'd be really good for, for anybody like that to go there, so.
Was there something at Floyd County, too? Wasn't it going to be?
Yep. I was also, we're working on that right now. We're planning a big soil health event in Floyd County in the spring. It'll be held, I believe, in March seventh is the date, and March eighth is the rain date, twenty twenty-four. So this spring at the fairgrounds in Floyd County, Mitchell County Office, Floyd, Howard, and Chickasaw County, USDA Service Center offices are all kind of working together to put together a big event. And so hopefully, moving into January here, we're going to start seeing flyers out across the county. And I've been working on reaching out to some producers that I work with on a regular basis and, and then connecting with their network of farmers to let them know about it. So, yeah, we don't have an official flyer, times and dates set in stone yet, but we're hoping to have that figured out here by our next meeting coming up here in January, so.
Very good. Any questions for Devin? We, we wait on our funding. We've been waiting on all of our funding requests until we start doing our budget just after the first year. So we don't have an answer for you right now, but we received your request.
Sure.
We appreciate everything that you've been doing, so.
Yeah. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much. A consideration of wage increases for safety coordinator. Rachel, you want to speak to that a little bit?
I just need to confirm, so Melissa Tesler is the safety coordinator, I believe. She's making a dollar ninety per hour, and it's for thirty-five hours a week. So normally when we do the wage increase for hourly employees, it's usually done a percentage for the safety coordinator, since it's such a small amount. And so I just need to confirm the percentage for this year.
And remind me, in the previous years, have we done it based on the average of, like this year, the average is three point four two percent?
Right.
So we just plug that into that dollar ninety?
Correct.
That's what we usually do?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
You said thirty-four hours a week, or?
Thirty-five hours a week.
A week, it's fair.
Yep.
So what's that? It doesn't matter. What's the board on doing, like we've done in the past, three point four two percent, a dollar ninety?
Think so.
I mean, that's consistent as far as what we've been doing.
Yeah. That much, you know?
Yeah.
It's staying consistent.
Yeah. Board's good about accepting motion to approve three point four two percent increase on the existing wage of the safety coordinator.
I'll make that motion to increase the safety coordinator by three point four two percent.
The mayor's made a motion, is your second?
Second.
No seconds. Any discussion? Hearing done?
From Kalten, Mike.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye. Motion carries. Items of note, meetings attended. I went to the Mitchell County Soil and Water Conservation District meeting, but there's no way I can say anything better than what Devin already has done. So that's, I have nothing to report on that. We also had a executive committee meeting for the North Iowa Area Council of Governments, NIACOG. It's pretty, pretty meeting here. Constantly trying to increase ridership in the transit buses that are going around. And I don't have the dollar amounts that I can say right now what it costs to ride in different towns, but it's, it's an excellent service. It would be, it would benefit a lot of people if they just were more aware of it and probably used it. It's super cheap to, to use it. At some time, I'll probably come up with those numbers and mention it here at the meeting. But that was the focus of the meeting mostly, is increased ridership in the transit system because it's a valuable service. So.
Is it like three bucks? I don't know where you go.
I don't remember what. In Mason City, I think it's only a buck, but I don't know what it is for here. And I should know that, those numbers, but I don't have them yet. But you think it's three bucks to go?
I think.
Okay.
Stop to rehab, sometimes they send people to Mason.
So for stop at the rehab, three dollars to go to Mason?
Yeah.
And then that's a round trip thing, three bucks? I mean, so. I mean, how cheap is that?
Right.
So.
That's what it was, but I did, could have less changed, but. You're too old, but I don't know.
And they get, they get the funding from the feds and the state based on the amount of ridership that gets used. So the more it gets used, the more the feds and the state will also help fund the system. So it's, it's kind of a, a big benefit if they can increase that good service to everybody, so.
How do you find out about it?
The, the number is on the side of the buses, and you just call the number up, and then dispatch, goes through a dispatcher. They line up for the bus to come, pick you up, and take you where you need to go.
Can you do it locally, like say rehab to the clinic or anything?
Usually goes out of town. I don't think you, I don't think it's a local.
Okay. I'm saying not about that town. I can tell you don't know more about that. I'm, I'm finding out the information now.
I suppose local or, you know, because there's people that don't drive, but need to go to the grocery store.
Yeah.
Whatever. Or the clinic.
Well, there's three buses that are out at the shop, and I don't, I mean, I don't think they're all going to Mason City in back, though. I think they transport you around the county. So.
One goes to Child City, I think.
They take people to dialysis, too.
Okay. I mean, it's really good for people that just can't drive or have a problem driving, can't drive at night or whatever. So, and they're, they invested in a, the dispatching used to be all by people. And then they had a program that was wrote by somebody, which is antiquated now. So they've invested in a, a different dispatch computer program, which is going to really increase the efficiency of NIACOG transit itself. So sometimes you'd see a bus go by another bus, where that doesn't make much sense where this thing's going to be able to organize it much better. But, so they're doing things to try to save money, too. And anyway, that's what my reason is.
Oh, I have a substance abuse coalition board meeting for Mitchell County. Talked about the treasury department, talked about a tobacco grant that Mitchell County has, but Saragossa County applies for it. I understand why we don't, but anyway, I'm trying to get more people involved in the coalition, and like the next meeting's going to be during the day. Eleven, I'm trying to get other people to come to it, so. Low, low attendance. Then I had a Central Iowa Juvenile Detention meeting. And I guess Mitchell County had thirty-seven bed days down there last month. So a couple juveniles there, whatever. Since the new addition was put on, they haven't had to call the police or sheriff's office. I don't know if they got people spread out more, who are able to take more dangerous people, you know, from other counties and which pay high dollars. So, so it's working out well. Their incomes went up. That's their new addition. So, you know, you take first degree murder people and you put them in their own cell, their own day room, they don't have to worry about starting a riot, you know? So.
It would have made me miss juveniles.
Yeah. Talking about juveniles. And I think there's, out of the forty, fifty people there, I think thirty-seven are all there on felonies. There's three, three murder ones there right now. Tempted murder, sex abuse, tempted murder. I mean, it's just, yeah, a lot of attempted murders. Robbery's first degree. A lot of, the shoplifters don't go there anymore. Any room, so anyway. Yeah, so everything's going pretty good there. And discussing Floyd Handbook, maybe looking at that next meeting, get any updates that should be done. It ain't been updated for a few years, so just want to do it, so.
And that was it.
You talked about tobacco grant. What is that then? What is that?
Well, it comes from the, you mind if I, Rachel? I think it comes from the state or the feds. And every county can apply for it, and you use it for education on.
Okay.
For kids not to smoke or whatever, but I know Saragossa County, so she was there, so she applies for Mitchell County. So I asked how much it was, she said a thousand dollars, so. So, yeah, I'm not quite sure why.
You mean if we don't apply, then somebody else will apply for others?
I guess so.
Okay.
So I didn't, I don't quite understand that. Just ask how much it was.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe I'll ask across the street. And maybe I'll ask across the street someday why we don't do it, but anyway, yeah.
I have nothing. I have nothing. Clerk of court, in Florida November. They had, uh, toll fees of $1,651.14, that is a so noted item. Is there management kind of update?
I have Myron's 2761, 500th Street, McIntyre, Pete Told Me Farm, 4202, Victoria, New Sinister, and Fairview, 1050, Windfall, Amity, Trac City.
Thank you. Public comments, were there any public comments? Okay, online, don't think so. Okay, it is nine o'clock, meeting adjourned.